Collaboration for Children. Can I ask and welcome Maeve Johnston, who is a management analyst for San Mateo County Health System. Ms. Johnston, evening.
Where do you want me?
Right there is fine.
Great. Hello. Wow, you guys just start jumping right into it. I have a presentation that should be coming up.
Okay.
So, my name is Maeve Johnston. I'm a management analyst with the San Mateo County Health System. And, thank you. We wanted to present to this council about the work that we've been doing through the Community Collaboration for Children success in this community. So, a little background, the initiative has been around for about a year and a half in the planning phase. And it really came out of the understanding that there were many young people in our county system, so in our behavioral health and recovery systems, in juvenile probation, and in the foster system, who are coming from similar neighborhoods. So, that they were shared clients across these agencies and that they were coming from the same neighborhoods. So, the idea was to go to those places and do community-based planning, to really go to the community and ask what is going on? What do young people need here and how can we serve them better and do better by them? So, we took a place-based approach. We landed in four communities, and I'll get into that a little more in the next few slides. We wanted to engage impacted youth and families directly, so go directly to them and ask them to reflect on their experiences. We wanted to address youth need across multiple sectors, so juvenile probation, behavioral health, all of the kind of challenges that are facing young people. We wanted to really build on assets, and I'll talk about that a little more. But we know that there are just incredible community assets in Daly City. So, we wanted to work with community organizations and local folks. We wanted to use a trauma-informed approach, so to be as transparent as possible, recognizing that our systems cause trauma and that many young people who are in our systems have experienced trauma. We took a lot of best practices research into our work, and we also wanted to learn as we go. So, we had a great evaluator with us every step of the way. After every meeting, we had a reflection on that meeting so that we made sure that the next meeting would always be better than the one before that. So, the four neighborhoods that we... So, the four neighborhoods we looked at were in Daly City, South San Francisco, Redwood City, North Fair Oaks, and East Palo Alto. And we looked at two things. So, that checkerboard that you see there is two metrics that we looked at. We looked at youth need as well as youth planning readiness. So, youth need was things like engagement in our systems, family poverty, low birth weight, some of the kind of classic public health indicators. And then youth planning readiness was the good stuff. So, it was like the community assets, is a school district a big lift school district? What youth-serving organizations are here? How robust are those services? And how deep are those relationships? So, looking at those two things, where you see the darkest purple is where we landed in those communities. So, to use those assets as well as address need. So, we worked in North Fair Oaks, Redwood City, and South City in our first phase, and then moved into Daly City and East Palo Alto. So, here's just a more zoomed-in view of the Daly City areas. And we did, so as I mentioned, we did some community planning. We engaged 289 residents through surveys, focus groups, and group conversations. We worked with 11 champions, several of whom are in this room, and I want to just quickly hear from them too, so they can share their experience. We had four neighborhood leadership group meetings, so we pulled together leaders, nonprofits, and service providers who are leaders in the community. I see Pat here. Daly City Partnership was an incredible ally to us and helped us so much with this work. So, we did 241 surveys, two tele sessions, two dream walls. I just heard from a real broad group of young people and their families. So, I want to just pass the mic quickly over to our champions. Come on up. Oh, okay. And they are going to have translation.
Okay. Bueno.
Buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Claudia Melendez.
Good evening. My name is Claudia Melendez.
Tengo siete años de vivir aquí en la ciudad de Elisa.
I have seven years living in Daly City.
Soy madre de familia de dos niños de la escuela Woodrow Wilson Elementary.
And I have two children at Woodrow Wilson Elementary School.
Me siento alegre de haber participado en el proyecto.
I'm very happy to be part of this project.
Y ver las necesidades que tiene la comunidad.
And listen from the community all their needs.
Y entre tantas necesidades que tienen, recuerdo dos que fueron más fuertes.
And among all the worries and issues that I heard, I remember two that were like priorities, and I listened from many of them.
Poder tener un seguro médico accesible.
To have access to health insurance.
Y también el alto costo de la renta.
And everybody was worried about the high cost of rent in the area.
Solamente.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Buenas noches a todos.
Good evening, everyone.
Mi nombre es Ethel Rodriguez, y soy un papá de Woodrow Wilson.
My name is Ethel Rodriguez, and I'm also a parent of Woodrow Wilson.
Tengo dos niños.
I have two children.
Y para mí fue una maravillosa experiencia escuchar a la comunidad.
And for me, it was a marvelous opportunity to listen to the community.
Una de las cosas más relevantes fueron...
One of the things more relevant that I listened to was...
Fue vivienda accesible.
The people were talking about where to find accessible housing.
Muchas veces construyen edificios, pero no hay la suficiente información, ya sea en la computadora o ya sea también afuera de los edificios.
Many times, we see a lot of building being in construction, but there is not much information that the community has access to, and we don't know where to find it, if it's in the computer, online, or around, if there is a place that we can go and find that information.
Al escuchar esto, no me siento sola con mis problemas. Me siento que lo comparto con la comunidad.
When I was listening to the community, I felt that I was not alone, that there were many worries and issues that I shared with many members of the community.
El segundo punto fue...
And the other issue that I remember listening from many was...
Es cuando los adolescentes están creciendo.
It's about the teenagers when they are going to be an adult.
Empiezan a usar cosas ilegales o drogas.
That sometimes they have problems with drug addictions.
Llaman a la policía, y muchas veces los papás salen arrestados.
That sometimes they call the police, and because they are under age, the parents are the ones that get in trouble and are arrested in some cases.
Y también lo bonito es que ya estamos formando relaciones con el Sargento Ortiz.
And but out of that, it was good because we create this relationship with Sergeant Ortiz from the D.C. Police Department, and we have had two meetings with him.
Llega a nuestra escuela a visitarla.
He has come to the school to visit and talk to us.
Muchas gracias.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, this was just a wonderful opportunity for us to, you know, I work for the county. I worked throughout the entire county. So, to really have, to be able to work with local folks, to really understand better the community and hear community voice was really an honor for me and for, I think, the whole team. So, thank you, guys, so much. I was really blown away by your leadership. Just quickly, these are some of our community partners who we worked with very closely, who participated in our neighborhood leadership group. I want to especially, again, call out Daly City Partnership, who was just, helped us out a lot in this work. So, what did we hear? I will start with, yes, I'll start with the top issues. So, housing, the cost of housing, the high cost of living, and living wage job opportunities was by far the highest, the issue that we heard the most. We heard some feedback on the criminal justice system and relative to the issue of trauma and recognizing trauma. We heard structural and institutional racism from different folks and kind of across issues, insufficient educational opportunities, a lack of a coordinated approach to mental health and substance use, and a lack of safe and inclusive places and affordable activities for children, youth, and families. And that really, you know, as we worked through this initiative, we really came to see that last one as very much relevant to the one above it. So, you know, when kids have places, safe and affordable, free places to spend time with each other and their families, that goes a long way towards addressing some of those mental health challenges that come up later. So, we looked at issues was one piece, and then we also asked residents about strategies. So, the top strategies we heard were around increasing affordable housing, expanding living wage job opportunities, expanding the screening of young people and children, expanding screening in the medical system for low-income families, keeping students in the classroom so when there are behavior challenges, to have expulsion as the absolute last resort, and creating more safe and affordable places for young people and their families. We also heard expanding social and emotional learning opportunities were important for both young people and people who work with youth, increasing trauma awareness of providers and community members in crisis situations, I think also relative to teachers and youth workers, increasing positive interaction between police and community members, expanding affordable out-of-school activities. Particularly, we heard that relative to culturally appropriate programming and activities, and then expanding access to legal information around tenants' rights. So, we heard all this information. We worked closely with a consultant who is now kind of synthesizing everything and will create a community action plan. We will share that broadly with our partners, with your council. We are happy to do more presentations like this to any partners or funders who may be interested in funding some of the steps that come out of this. And then we'll continue to engage locally to talk about implementation with the partner groups and potentially, hopefully, with some other outside funders. And then we also are trying to learn from our experience across the county. Like I said, we worked in four communities, so we're drawing learnings for ourselves and our agencies from our experiences across the four neighborhoods. So, thanks for the opportunity to update this council. We really appreciate it, and it's been great to work in Daly City. So, I'll answer any questions if anyone has...
Thank you very much. Wonderful presentation. Go ahead, Mr. Giovanni. Did you have something?
Well, I just want to say muchas gracias a mi amigas. I've had the pleasure of being able to work with them in the community and during the school, everything they're involved in at that school, as you know, and with Pat Baum being there. And our faith in action hero is Carolina, if people don't know her. She's everywhere. So, she's really trying to get our community together, and I thank you. I know that you did a presentation at the Daly City Partnership and then the next steps, but you did a tremendous job, and as you saw, they're really are engaged. And we need to figure out, hopefully, we can work together to try to give some things for people that live in our community, no matter where you are from, that they want to feel that their children have a place to be. And I know it's costly, because I remember a couple of times they asked if we had scholarships for some of our programs and recreation colleagues, and there wasn't enough to go around for their children, so they didn't have any place for their children to be in the afternoons while they were trying to work. So, there's many things we can work on together. So, I appreciate that and looking forward to the next steps. And I don't know how, and you're still, I believe, looking for funding for the next steps? Is that correct?
Looking for funding. So, we were funded for our planning, and we are now looking at our existing resources within our contracts and our internal budgets to see how we can sort of fill gaps now that we've heard these priorities from the community. And then we're also looking for outside funders. So, if anyone knows anyone.
Yeah, let's all keep our eyes out for them, because it's, you don't want to go this far and then not continue the programming. That would be really sad. So, and hopefully, I know the board of supervisors support it as well.
Yes.
So, we have to keep looking for that. But thank you. You did a great job, and Pat, and Carolina, and mi amigas, and the, I know those two over there sitting beside Pat. So, you guys did a great job. Oh, and I see her as well. So, muchas gracias.
Any other questions or thoughts?
I just want to say thank you to your presentation and also for the research and analysis on a kind of a really grassroots, community-based, building approach, and seeing residents of the community really under leadership. Looking forward to seeing what the action steps are, but this is great to see this type of analysis and really reaching out to what the needs are of the community. And I remember Shereen talking about this community-based planning that you guys are looking towards. I'm glad that you've reached out to Daly City as one of the cities. So, thank you for your work and looking forward to seeing what the next steps are. And if anything or anyone comes to mind as far as support for your program, I'll definitely shoot out an email. And also, thank you for your allied support with Daly City Partnership.
Thank you. Thanks.
I just want to say thank you for your presentation as well. As a researcher myself, I'm really appreciative, like understanding, putting together trauma-based, informed research, and I love the whole aspect of this, you know, participatory action research. It's basically what it is. And it does more than just research, right? It's not just findings, just to have findings, but findings that has some sort of social change that's accompanied with it. And it does so much, as a parent myself, and having parents here, having the kids here, that it's more than just doing the study for the habit of just doing the study. But how do we create these studies in order to create change, especially in Daly City? And then one of the ideas that I want to implement is to have like a youth commission in Daly City, because I think we need to have more legs on it and more representation in terms of like what youth can do. They're not just kids, you know? For myself, as a person that benefited from youth programming and now running a nonprofit for youth, I see the benefits of manifesting these ideas and these issues into giving legs to it. And it's more far-reaching in terms of just finding change in community, but long-term, I guess, long-term wealth in terms of creating that cultural wealth and capital to go into higher education and what can you do with that higher education and come back to the community instead of leaving the community. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor, you're going to come in? Okay. Thank you very much. Your presentation was wonderful, and thank you for bringing your guests. All right. Let me see. My computer just froze. Let me see. My computer just froze.
I don't have the minutes.
Okay, let me go on to the approval of the minutes of May 28th. Can I get a motion to approve that?
Motion to approve?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, then we go to approval of the agenda. Can I get a motion?
Motion to approve the agenda?
You have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any objection? Hearing none, the agenda is approved. Let me go to the consent agenda. Is there any item that want to be pulled? No? Anyone? Okay, can I get a motion to approve the consent?
Motion to approve?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any objection? Hearing none, that item is approved. Then we go on to public hearings. Number 15, notice of lien and special assessment to rental property. Let me call on Ms. Immer.
Actually, this is Mr. High.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council members, and Madam City Manager, Todd High, Acting Director of Finance and Administrative Services.
Evening.
For this evening, we have notice of lien and special assessment to rental properties. This is for unpaid business licenses based on grocery receipts for commercial and residential rental property as of October 1st, 2018. We have provided two written notices to the property holders. The first notice was August 24th, 2018. The second notice was February 1st, 2019. On May 13th, the council set the time and place for this meeting to be this evening. On May 23rd, we sent notices of intent to lien rental property to the registered owners. Currently, we would be placing liens on approximately $202,000 on 278 properties in Daly City. For comparative purposes, last year, there was $149,000 on 207 properties. Currently, we have over almost 8,800 business licenses, and 3,500 of those are for rental property. So, that's where we stand at this moment, and we're continuing to work with property owners to clear those unpaid balances and then hopefully avoid liens coming up this lien cycle in July.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. High. Any questions? Comments? All right, hearing none. Can I get a motion to approve? Oh, let me open the public hearing. I don't have any speaker cards, so can I get a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any objection? Hearing none. The hearing is closed. Can I get a motion to adopt the resolution?
Motion to adopt the resolution. Sorry, Mr. Vice Mayor.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Can I get a roll call, please?
Ms. Giovanni?
Aye.
Ms. Manalo?
Aye.
Dr. Rod?
Aye.
Mr. Sylvester?
Aye.
Mr. Buenaventura?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. High.
Thank you.
Item number 16, which is the adopt the resolution to determine Westlake Village Apartments to be delinquent in solid waste fees and directing the placement of this account on the county property tax roll for collection. Ms. Immer.
Before you start, I would need to recuse myself, please, because I live at that property. Excuse me.
Okay. Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. Good evening. This item before you is a special assessment lien determining waste disposable account at Westlake Village Apartment to be delinquent and directing the placement of these accounts on the county property tax rolls for collection, as well as the assessment of collection charges. To date, the delinquent charges as prepared for this staff report is $1,081,437,000. I have received information that there was a recent payment made today, which brings the balance to $966,435,000, but we'll lodge that into the record as we proceed with this presentation. By way of background, the parcel at Westlake Village Apartment has been delinquent on payments for their garbage service since January 2017. Westlake Village is an approximately 3,200-unit multifamily commercial solid waste account with rates charged as approved by the city council. To go through basically the sequencing of events in terms of the billing, it's important to note that this is a special lien notification for a public hearing under the California Government Code, which authorizes the city council to place a special lien for delinquent solid waste fees. By way of notification, the city council did set time and place of the special hearing on May 28th, 2019. A notice of the public hearing and publication was placed in a newspaper on June 9th, 2019. And on June 12th, 2019, a letter to the property owner and notice for the hearing was sent to the parcel. On June 24th, which is today, we have the hearing set for a special lien hearing. A packet has been provided to the city council with staff report and attachments documenting and basically laying out the history of the Westlake Village billing that leads to the delinquency at this point. Due to the amount of the delinquent solid fees for Westlake Village, I believe it's important to briefly state to the council the hierarchy of the sequencing of billing in this case. Prior to the franchise agreement with Allied Waste, which was the old franchise agreement prior to 2016, Westlake Village was underbilled for garbage services at a contended rate, discounted rate of approximately $79,000 per month. The city was unaware of the origin of the rate, and the underbilling included mistakes by the city, as well as rates applied erroneously, which I'll explain. April 13, 2015, the city council awarded a 15-year franchise agreement to Republic Services. The new franchise agreement came into effect on February 2016. December 2016, upon review by Republic Services, Republic Services discovered that Westlake Village Apartments were being underbilled for garbage services under the approved rate structure. On January 2017, Republic Services did inform Westlake Village Apartments of the erroneous garbage billing and notified them that the city would be invoicing them with the correct bill effective January 2017. January 2017, the city did invoice $122,459,000, but later realized that Republic did discover in early part of 2018 that 11 accounts under Westlake Village had been inadvertentlyly omitted. The city did notify of this underbilling, which should have led to the bill being $138,000 monthly. October 2017, the city council, under a notice public hearing of 218, approved a two-year rate adjustment with a maximum of 10.5% increase on commercial accounts and multifamily accounts effective October 1st, 2017, and July 1st, 2018. The city council approved the rate of 10.5% applied to Westlake Village to be effective October 2017. However, the city finance department inadvertently failed to increase the billing to Westlake Village. This was discovered in early part of 2018, and Republic Services discovered that the 11 accounts were also admitted. In May of 2018, the city finance department did send a letter to Westlake Village Apartment when they became aware of the invoices to Westlake Village Apartments did not include the 10.5 rate increase and the 11 accounts that were omitted. This sent a invoiced bill, which was attached to your packet, on May 2018 to $159,309,000. On July 1st, 2018, the second rate increase of 10... On July 1st, 2018, the second rate increase of 10.5% took effect, and the city provided the correct invoice for garbage services at Westlake Village Apartments to $165,000. Republic Services provided the city, and it has been made public, and has been made public, documentations of garbage service levels at Westlake Village from years 2017 and 2018, and provided a summary of the services to Westlake Village Apartments as well. Republic and the city has confirmed that service levels at Westlake Village has remained consistent within the last three years with slight increases and decreases that were requested by Westlake. This is a slide that shows a summary of those accounts and service bins at Westlake Village that you can review. Despite the service levels that Westlake Village has documented, Westlake's bill history showed delinquency amounts summarized in this slide and also presented in the city packet. I know it's difficult to read, but to just sort of give you a summary, so you'll note that the city billing invoices, let's say, for 2017 was $122,459,000. Westlake payment would be $79,168, and in the preceding years, Westlake Village proceeded to pay less than what the city would invoice to Westlake Village. For the record, Westlake Village and council on behalf of Westlake Village has lodged into the written record a written opposition. The documented has been provided as a public record to the city clerk, as well as distributed to the entire city council. Westlake Opposition points out a dispute to the service levels at Westlake Village and rates over the last three years, contending that Westlake has in fact overpaid the city. It is important to note that the City Council, to the City Council, that Westlake rates, as charged by Republic and billed by the city, are rates for multifamily and commercial accounts for all those accounts in the city of Daly City. While the franchise agreement does not call out for the city staff to physically verify bin counts at Westlake Apartments in anticipation for this hearing, city staff assistant to the city manager, Stephen Stoltley, recently verified bin counts at Westlake Village. The sheet recently prepared by the City Council and the public is summarized in this slide today, and Mr. Stoltley is available to the City Council should they have any additional questions. As demonstrated in your packet, as well as in this public hearing, Westlake Village Apartment continues to pay less than the billed amount from January 2017 to the present. The city only seeks to recover delinquent amounts invoiced to Westlake Village on a moving forward basis from January 2017 to the present. As such, staff recommends to the City Council conduct a public hearing, adopt a resolution authorizing the collection of the delinquent solid waste fees up to an amount of $1,081,436, and county assessed fees of approximately $54,07324, for a total lien amount of $1,135,509. At this time, I'd like to thank the City Council and the mayor for your time. As always, the staff is here to answer all of your questions. Representatives of Republic Services, Mike Mahoney, as well as Republic Council, Scott Gordon, is available for any questions supporting your hearing. Also present is Westlake Village Apartment, and in opposition for the council, Tom Birch, for counsel for Westlake Village is also available for any questions. Thank you for your time, and I'm here for any questions.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Zimmerman. Let me open the public hearing on this issue. Do we have any questions from any of the council members first? No? Okay, let me call up, I have Mr. Birch, who is the attorney for Westlake Village Apartments. Mr. Birch? Am I saying that right?
Yes, you are.
Okay, come on up. Sure, go ahead.
Please. My name is Tom Birch. Good evening.
Good evening.
Ladies and gentlemen, council members, members of the city and the staff. I'm the attorney for Westlake Village Apartments. With me here tonight are William Chautka, the property administrator from Westlake Village Apartments itself, as well as Kathleen McCormick, the president of Gerson Baker Associates, which is the management company that runs Westlake Village Apartments. I'm here to state Westlake's position. We dispute the claim of delinquency, and we oppose the filing of a special assessment lien. We filed a written opposition to the claim of delinquency and the consideration of a special assessment lien last Thursday, June 20th, and we provided copies for every council member. I hope you received them, and I hope you had an opportunity to review them. Westlake is advocating here tonight on behalf of itself and on behalf of the residents who live at Westlake. We have approximately 10,000 of your constituents who live at Westlake Village Apartments. The waste services bill is, in large part, allocated down to the residents. But if Westlake receives a bill and it does not believe the bill is legitimate, it cannot, does not, and has not allocated an illegitimate bill down to its residents, who are your constituents. I lost track, respectfully, Ms. Zimmerman, I lost track of the number of times you admitted there were errors and mistakes on the part of the city and Republic Services in connection with the billing. And I truly believe that is why we're here today. That's why we've had discussions for the past four months. That's why we've asked the questions we've asked, and that's why we're still trying to get the documents that we asked for and still getting answers to the questions. Would it be possible to get a glass of water?
Sure.
Thank you. I'll continue while I'm getting that. Thank you, sir. I saw documents on the slide. Did you try and taking that down? I saw documents on the slide here that I'd never seen before. Those are slides. I thought this was going to be a fair hearing, and we exchanged documents. We exchanged all our documents to the city attorney, and I'm surprised by slides I've seen here tonight. Some were sent to me, I recognized a few slides, were sent to me at 12 noon today. I haven't even had a chance to study them. I asked Ms. Zimmerman for an explanation of what they were. I got no response back, other than we have a right to produce them up to the time of the hearing. I also heard that Ms. Zimmerman say that city staff sometime recently, unbeknownst to us, has perhaps gone to Westlake to do a bin and container count? We're unaware of that. We've been advocating for a joint bin and container count at Westlake since 2017, most recently since March of 2019, when we said that to the city attorney and we said that to Republic Services. And it's been radio silence. They haven't moved on it. And now, tonight, I hear, oh, we did a bin count. When? Where? Who? Why didn't you invite us so that we can have a bin count at one time with all three parties? I'm really surprised by that. Anyway, let me continue now. I think it all begins with our spreadsheet two. And if you have your binders, I'd ask you to please turn to our spreadsheet number two. This shows, it's a comparison of the actual billing and payment history at Westlake with the city-approved commercial billing rates. And you can see in column four what the actual billing increases Westlake experienced are. In January 2017, Westlake experienced a 55% rate increase. The bill as of December 2016 was $79,000. Starting January 1, the bill went up to $122,000. That is a 55% increase. In May of 2018, Westlake experienced a 24% increase in its bill. The bill went from $122,000 to $151,000. And then, two months later, in July of 2018, the bill went from $151,000 to $165,000, which is a 10% increase. In comparison, in column eight, we have here, excuse me, column seven and eight, we have what the actual city-approved commercial rate increases are. There was no city-approved commercial rate increase in January 2017. None at all. Republic Services had waived the right to increase the rates in rate period number one, under the new franchise agreement that went into effect in February 2016. They waived that. There is no rate, city-approved rate increase January 2017. The first city-approved rate increase was in October of 2017. And that increase was for between 8.5% and 10.4%. The information I've seen from the city attorney says 8.5 to 10.5. The actual city resolution says 8.5 to 10.4. And for purposes of my spreadsheet, what I've done is simply taken the midpoint between 8.5 and 10.4, which is 9.4%. So, the upshot of this spreadsheet, exhibit two, is that when you compare the actual amount paid by Westlake of $3,120,000 in this period of time, as compared to what the billing rate would be under the city-approved billing rates, it shows that Westlake is actually overpaid by $585,000. Obviously, we have a difference of opinion regarding what happened in January of 2017. Let me now address the 55% rate increase we experienced in January 2017 in more detail. First of all, I think I've established it was not authorized by the city, and no documents are produced supporting a 55% increase in. The alleged justification is that there was an internal root audit by Republic, and it revealed that the Westlake account was invoiced incorrectly for service levels being provided. And that's exhibit four in my binder. This is a January 30, 2017, letter from Republic Services that talks about doing an internal root audit. We asked the city for a copy of the internal root audit. They said, "We don't have one." We asked Republic Services for a copy of the internal root audit. "We don't have one." What Republic Services relies on as an internal root audit is a computer billing summary from January of 2017, which is exhibit five in my binder. It's a mere three pages, computer billing summary, with a tally in the upper left-hand corner of $122,000, that they say is the internal root audit that justified an increase from $75,000 to $122,000 in the bill. Exhibit five completely fails to meet the test of an audit. Anybody who has any audit experience knows this is not an audit. And yet, Republic Services says on January 30, 2017, "Oh, we did an internal root audit, and your bill's going to go up to $122,000." Simply not true. Not only that, but exhibit five, the January spreadsheet from Republic or billing summary, contains errors. And when Westlake first got notice of this and saw the increase, they looked, they scrutinized this document, and they realized, "There's problems here. We're being charged for bins and containers at these locations that don't exist at Westlake." And so, Westlake performed its own bin and container count. And Mr. Chautka, in July of 2017, he submitted a letter to the city and to Republic, and it explained that he's analyzed this, and Westlake's being charged for bins and containers that don't exist, that Republic Services is not servicing at Westlake. He also complained about the lack of advance notice. He also complained about the excessive increase. He calculated that the errors on the bin and container overcount amounted to about $8,000 a month at that time. At that time, Westlake suggested to Republic that they have a joint site visit at Westlake to walk the property and count the bins and containers, each person with their own clipboard. To resolve that part of the dispute, Republic failed to do that. Let me give you analogy. If you have one of your constituents who owns a home or owns a small, owns a small business here in Daly City, and for years, they've had one bin, one container, and they're being charged for one bin or one container. And all of a sudden, one month, they get a letter and they say, "Internal root audit, your bills be doubled." And they call and they say, "Why?" And they say, "Well, according to our records, you have two bins and containers that are being serviced." And the guy says, "No, I don't have two bins and containers. I have one bin or one container. I've always had one bin and one container. You guys are wrong." And if the response the homeowner would get, which is the response we've gotten, is, "We don't care. Our records show you have two. Tough luck, pay the bill, or we're going to lien your property." That's no way to treat the residents of Daly City. Why would you treat a resident of Daly City like that? That's simply wrong. And there's no way to treat a responsible community partner like Westlake Village Apartments. Now, let's turn to the 24% rate increase in May of 2018. We know from my spreadsheet, and we even know from Ms. Zimmerman's comments, the city did not authorize a rate increase in May of 2018. They didn't do it. It doesn't exist. They authorized a rate increase, to my average, 9.4%. October 2017, July of 2018. Yet, we get a rate increase in May of 2018. What's the first alleged justification presented by the city? The first alleged justification is the letter from Mr. Anthony Tofiga. That's exhibit eight in my binder. On May 22 of 2018, Mr. Tofiga wrote a letter to Westlake, giving him formal notification that starting the bill beginning May, the monthly rate will increase from $122,000 to $151,000. He says, "This rate was confirmed by Republic Services and coincides with the solid waste rate adjustment that went into effect on October 1, 2017." The October 1, 2017, rate adjustment was, by my average, 9.4%, not 24%. And when you calculate that, that's a 24% increase here, from 122 to 151. So, what Mr. Tofiga said is not true. The October 2017 rate increase was no more than 10.4%. And exhibit seven is the City Council resolution that exactly specifies what that commercial rate increase can be. Now, the city attorney, in conversations with the city attorney in the last several months, she's conceded that the city can't retroactively apply the rate increase back to October of 2017. So, having successfully refuted the argument, the first argument, the first justification, that, "Oh, this was a city-approved rate increase," which it wasn't, we got a brand-new justification at the meeting we had with the city attorney and Republic Services on June 4th of this past month, three weeks ago. At that time, for the very first time, very first time, we heard the claim that the reason for this increase in May was that the Westlake account had been invoiced incorrectly again, and correcting that error was the reason for the increase. We were surprised by that. The claim is supposedly 11 routes had been omitted from Republic's billing. They claim that those omitted routes accounted for $15,600 of the $28,850 May 2018 increase. That's over one-half of the increase, they claim, was attributable to these 11 accounts that were erroneously invoiced. And incredibly, they claim that those 11 omitted accounts had been erroneously omitted since January of 2017. We're highly skeptical of that claim for several compelling reasons, and I'll explain them. First, remember January 2017, the letter from Republic Services. They did an internal root audit. Why on earth did the internal root audit, done by Republic Services in January 2017, not reveal all the routes that were allegedly incorrectly invoiced? They should have revealed these 11 routes. They didn't. They didn't. I don't believe there were 11, there are 11 routes that are incorrectly invoiced. Next, Section 4.2.4 of the franchise agreement requires Republic to conduct what's known as field reconciliations at least twice a year. That's my Exhibit 9 in my binder. It's right out of the franchise agreement. The stated purpose of the field reconciliations is to, quote, "ensure that all services provided are actually billed." Between January 2017 and May of 2018, when the rates went up 24%, Republic Services should have conducted at least three field reconciliations, any one of which should have revealed these 11 routes that Republic Services now claims were erroneously omitted. It didn't. When I first heard this claim, I requested copies of all the field reconciliations ever done by Republic Services. None have been produced. No field reconciliations have been produced. I don't know if they were done. If they weren't done, Republic Services was in breach of the franchise agreement. If they weren't done, Republic Services is the cause of this entire situation that we're in. Lastly, Mr. Tofiga's May 22 letter notifying us of the increase, the 24% increase, completely fails to even mention alleged incorrect invoicing or allegedly erroneously omitted accounts. Why? The city, in their staff report, they admit that they knew this in early 2018, and Mr. Tofiga writes the letter, and he says it's because of a rate adjustment that was authorized back in October. Why are we hearing about these 11 erroneously omitted routes now? It's strange credulity. It seems this justification was pulled from thin air, frankly. Let's turn to the 10% rate increase in July of 2018. Without question, we don't dispute that the city did authorize a rate increase between 8.5 and 10.4% for commercial accounts effective July 1, 2018. We don't dispute that. We do dispute, however, the base route, or, excuse me, the base rate upon which the increase would be calculated. And we do dispute when the rate change can be imposed on Westlake because of the advance notice requirement that we contend wasn't complied with. And of course, we do dispute the errors in the bin container count that continue to be perpetuated. Now let me shift gears and talk about the 21 days' notice, because that's an issue for us as well. Our position is Republic failed to provide 21 days' advance notice of rate changes as required by the franchise agreement. We've attached Exhibit 10, which is the section of the franchise agreement that states that Republic is required to provide 21 days' advance notice before the effective date of any rate changes. Now, as to the 55% rate change beginning January 1, 2007, notice was not given until January 30 of 2007. That's our Exhibit 4, the January 30 letter. If you write a letter on January 30 saying that your rates are going to go up 55% beginning January 1, that's not advance notice. That's the opposite of advance notice. That's retroactive notice. William Chowka brought this up to Republic Services back in 2017 and objected to that. Two years ago, Republic Services conceded that advance notice was not given as required. Republic Services conceded that the rate change could not be effective until, as against Westlake, be effective until March 1 of 2017. Yet, that concession, which amounts to almost $100,000, is not reflected in the alleged delinquency the city attorney put up there today. It's still included in the claim of delinquency. As to the 24% rate change beginning May 1, 2018, here again, notice was not given until Mr. Tofiga's letter of May 21, but his letter of May, or, excuse me, May 22, but his letter of May 22 says that this is the new rate as of May 1. Again, it's retroactive notice. It's not advance notice. So per the terms of the franchise agreement, that rate change cannot begin until July 1 of 2018. As to the 10% rate change beginning July 1, 2018, here again, no advance notice was Westlake, we only received the notice about the increase when we received the bill. The document that was just produced last week by Republic and the city that is allegedly the advance notice given of the July 2018 increase is suspect. We asked for any rate increase notices two months ago, and they were never produced until the week before the hearing. And we have questions about them, but now we don't have an opportunity to ask questions. It just seems, it's too curious that we've asked for these notices, and they're produced on the eve of the hearing. We contend that rate change, the July 2018 rate change, can't begin until September 1, 2018. So where do we stand with all this, then? Well, we've produced a spreadsheet of our own, which we've shared with everyone. That's Exhibit 15. And Exhibit 15 is a spreadsheet that makes a big assumption, a big, big assumption that we do not agree with. But for purposes of argument only, we're making the assumption that the $122,000 bill in January of 2017 is authorized and accurate. We're making that assumption. We dispute it, but we're making that assumption. And, but we're making adjustments to the bills on a going-forward basis. We've calculated in the 9.4% rate increase in May of 2018, the 9.4% increase in July of 2018. But we made adjustments. We made adjustments for the rate increases in excess of that authorized by the city council. We've made adjustments due to Republic Services' failure to provide advance notice of the rate increases, such that the rates aren't effective until the dates several months later, as I explained. And we've made adjustments due to Republic Services' continuing erroneous bin container count. And those adjustments are on spreadsheet number 5 in column 4. That's the adjustment due to the rate increases in excess of the city-approved rate increase. That's $246,000. The adjustment due to Republic Services' failure to provide advance notice of rate increases, that's an adjustment of $134,000. And the final adjustment due to the erroneous perpetual erroneous bin container count is $215,000. So when you look at what the bills would be if you assume the $122,000 is correct in January, which we don't assume, and you make these adjustments on a going-forward basis, the balance allegedly due to Westlake would be $368,000. So based on these two spreadsheets, spreadsheet 2 and spreadsheet 15, it appears the dispute is bracketed on one side with the possible overpayment by Westlake of $585,000, and on the other side with a possible amount due of $368,000. What has Westlake done to try to resolve this matter? It begs to be resolved. I chided Ms. Zimmerman on a telephone call recently. I said, "Are we really going to have a jury trial where the jury takes a day out of court and goes over to Westlake with their clipboard and counts bins and containers?" She said, "Oh, no, no, we don't want that." This thing cries out to be resolved, and we've worked to try to get this resolved, and we're willing to continue to do that. And that's one of the things we're asking for, is to require, to ask the city council to direct the city attorney, the city staff, and Republic Services to continue to meet and confer with us to try to get this resolved. But let me tell you what we've done. In June of 2017, Mr. Chowka had a meeting with Republic and the city to complain about the January 2017 increase, to find out why it came about, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. In July 2017, a month later, after Mr. Chowka had a chance to analyze that Republic Services' January computer billing summary, he wrote him a letter. That's in my packet. And he objected to the increase. He objected to the lack of notice, and he apprised them of the bin and container irregularities. And he provided his own documents supporting our bin and container count with specific addresses. And for example, it would say at 2 Coronado, "Republic, according to your thing, you're charging us for 10 bins, yet we only have six bins at 2 Coronado that are being serviced. You're overcharging us." In December 2017, I was first contacted by Republic's attorney. At that time, I suggested that the party representatives have a joint site visit to count bins and containers, to at least try to resolve the dispute over the bin and container count. No response. Neither my client nor I had any further contact from the city or from Republic for 14 months. The very next contact we received was in February of 2019, earlier this year. What was the contact? It was Exhibit 7, excuse me, Exhibit 11. It was the February 20 demand letter from the city attorney that if we didn't pay $1 million, the city's going to file a lien against your property. And it was a telephone call from Republic Services attorney to me, threatening to cease picking up trash at Westlake Village Apartments if we didn't pay $1 million. From beginning in March through June, we've tried to work with the city and Republic to get answers to the questions that we obviously have, and we're still working on that. We've had two face-to-face meetings with Republic, Republic's attorney, and the city attorney. But interestingly, none of the city staff has been involved in this dispute, or involved in this dispute as attended. The first meeting, Ms. Shawna Maltby, the city manager, she had conflict, didn't get there until halfway through the meeting, and said, "It's all before her time." She didn't know anything about it, as I recall. But Mr. Tofiga has never been here, but no one from the utility billing department has been to these meetings to explain anything. Instead, we're getting these claims from Republic Services and from Ms. Zimmerman. We wrote two substantive letters to the city, April 10 and April 28. Those are Exhibits 12 and 13. Multi-page letters going out point by point by point, many of the things I've raised here today, and it's been radio silence. I've never gotten anything, any substantive response back responding to these things. We've exchanged emails and had numerous telephone calls with the city attorney. We requested documents from Republic and the city. Some documents were produced. We're still waiting on others. We don't have, the annual reports from Republic are supposed to contain information about routes, number of routes that were serviced at where, et cetera. They've produced annual reports, but interestingly, that information that was required by the franchise agreement to be included in the annual reports is not in the annual reports. That would be probative to the issues we're dealing with tonight. Obviously, we don't have the field reconciliations, which are incredibly probative and relevant to the issues we're having here tonight. We've asked for documents supporting this claim of these 11 erroneously omitted routes. We haven't got any documents about that. We've asked for documents regarding, "When exactly is the last time that Republic and the city thinks the billing was correct? When is that? What was that amount? What was it based on?" No one seems to know. They haven't produced any documents. No route map has even been produced by Republic. A route map would show where these locations are, where they service them. No route map has been, ever been produced. I think that's an important document. As I mentioned, some new documents were just produced by the city last Monday. I've been out of town and trying to review them. I'm still reviewing them. Haven't had a chance to review them exhaustively. More new documents were just produced by the city last Friday as attachments to the staff report. I'm trying to review them. And then, as I mentioned at the outset, even more new documents were just produced at noon today that I'd never seen before. And obviously, I had a chance to skim them, but had not had a chance to review them in any detail. The fact that the city is still producing documents the week before the hearing, the Friday before the hearing, and the day of the hearing is compelling evidence that it would be premature, and it is premature, for the city council to find that Westlake is delinquent and to order a special assessment lien to be filed. Westlake has repeatedly suggested that the three parties have a joint site visit to Westlake to at least count bins and containers and at least try to resolve that part of the dispute. No one has taken us up on it until I hear tonight that supposedly the city has done something. We weren't involved. We know nothing about it. I would submit respectfully that, given what I've said, it's disingenuous for the staff report to claim, as it does, that they have made every effort to resolve this matter. They haven't. They simply haven't. I believe the city has, the staff has the burden of proof. They haven't met the burden of proof. I believe we presented compelling evidence and compelling arguments that if they don't refute the claim of delinquency, they raise serious questions about it, and if they don't refute the basis for any special assessment lien to be filed, they raise serious questions about that, too. I'd like to make a few more comments, if you bear with me, please. On the staff report, which I got on Friday, there's two documents that were never produced to us. Let me grab those here. There is attachment 13. I think one of them was shown on the screen by the city attorney. It's attachment 13, it's, the title of it is "Westlake Village Billing and Payment Issues." And the thrust of it is that in, at least in 2016, it says, "Westlake was under-billed by $706,534." There's no evidence to support that claim. That claim was made by the city attorney at our June 4, 2019, meeting, three weeks ago. I specifically said to the city attorney, "I don't believe it. I dispute it, and if you have documents to support the claim that we were under-billed in 2016, I want to see them." No documents have been produced. If they had documents, I think, to support the claim, they would have produced it. I don't think we were under-billed in 2016. As to the claim of underbilling in other years, I think we've sufficiently rebutted that by what I've already said tonight. So we categorically deny and reject the claim made in this document attached to the staff report that Westlake has experienced a saving of over $1 million in waste fees. It simply hasn't, and the evidence hasn't been produced to support that claim. As to the claim that the city has missed out on collecting $143,000 as a franchise fee, respectfully, I would say I think the most, the more appropriate action is for the city council to consider declaring Republic in breach of the franchise agreement and collecting the money from Republic Services. The other document in attachment 13 that I've never seen before is this document, and it has a bunch of comments in there. And the comments are very interesting to me, and I think they warrant some, I mean, telling you what those are. The first comment is about January of 2017. "Westlake Village Apartments' billing commencing with January 2017 service and going forward was changed to $122,000 on February 1, 2017, per John Mangini's request, former Republic Services Division Controller." See Attachment 1. No Attachment 1. I don't know what Attachment 1 is, but it hadn't been produced. Secondly, it just, it kind of confirms my comment about advance notice. They're saying that on February 1, they're changing the bill effective beginning of January. That's not advance notice. The next sentence is interesting. It says, "In phone correspondence between Anthony Tofiga and John Mangini..." In phone correspondence. I submit to you, what is phone correspondence? I've heard of phone calls, and I've heard of correspondence. I've never heard of phone correspondence. Are there memos of phone calls? Or were there letters exchanged, and are there letters? Or were there letters exchanged, and are there letters? What is phone correspondence? I don't know. And what documentation exists? I'd like to know that. I'd like to see it. To continue on. "In phone correspondence between Anthony Tofiga and John Mangini, John stated there was an ongoing issue with Westlake Village Apartments, Republic Services, and Daly City regarding Westlake's correct billing rate." What is that ongoing issue? Mr. Tofiga hasn't attended any meetings to explain that to us, what he was told. Mr. Mangini hasn't, hasn't been to these meetings to explain what the ongoing issue is. We don't know what the ongoing issue is. As far as we're concerned, at Westlake Village Apartments, we received a bill. The bill was up until December of 2016, or through December 2016, we received the bills for $77,000. We paid the bill for $77,000. As far as we were concerned, everything is copacetic. And then, we know what happened beginning January 1 of 2017. So what was the ongoing issue? How far back did it go? What, what is it? Where's the documentation? And then, the next sentence. "John indicated not to change Westlake's rate unless notified by Republic Services." So John is telling Mr. Tofiga, "Don't do anything with the rate until you hear from us." So is Mr. Tofiga to disregard the city-approved billing increases and wait for approval from Follow down in the comments section, it says, "On May 21, Republic Services, President Rosanna Wan, notified Daly City to change Westlake billing to $151,000." So the whole, the whole notion that was in the staff report about, oh, we found out about these billings, erroneous 11, missing accounts in early 2018 and such and such, doesn't appear to be the case. It appeared, what precipitated the May increase is simply that Republic Services, Rosanna Wan, called up on the telephone to Daly City and said, "Change the billing to $151,000." What did Daly City say when they got that phone call? Did they think, well, wait a minute, $122,000, $151,000, that's 24% increase? What's the basis for that? Is there any questions asked? Is there any documentation? Did the city just simply accept the telephone request from Republic Services, send out the bill? June 21, the next comment is the same thing. It says, "On June 21, Republic Services, Rosanna Wan, notified Daly City to change Westlake billing to $165,000 for the July 2018 service." Did Daly City think, well, wait a minute, we just raised the rates on, on Westlake two months before. What are we doing raising the rates on Westlake again? Anybody think about that? Instead, it looks like Republic Services can voluntarily change the billing to Republic's, to Westlake, simply by calling the city. Again, Mr. Mangini's-
Okay, Mr. Birch, I need you to wrap it up. We're going on for a while.
The calculations on the spreadsheet on this thing shows that there's a variance of $43,000 for January and February, and those are the ones that were already conceded by Republic Services two years ago. So the action, what action do we ask for? We ask the city council, in light of the evidence and arguments we presented, to decline to authorize a special assessment lien. We ask the city council to direct the city attorney, the city staff, and Republic to continue to meet and confer with Westlake and myself for the next 90 days in a continuing effort to resolve this dispute, including a joint site visit to count bins and containers. And we ask the city council to direct the city attorney to produce all documents requested by Westlake and all documents allegedly supporting the city's claims within two weeks. Now, as a final comment, and I understand I'll wrap up, Mr. Mayor, the staff report suggested on page 3 that Westlake's claiming it's entitled to a discounted rate compared to other ratepayers. We're not claiming that. We're simply not claiming that. But we do wonder why Westlake is categorized under a commercial rate account, which results in its residents paying three times the rate that a single-family residence homeowner pays. A single-family residence homeowner pays about $27 a month for a container. Because Westlake is categorized as a commercial account, its residents will end up being allocated and will end up paying about $75 a month, three times as much. Both households generate the same type of waste. Both households generate same amount of waste. There's no good reason why your residents, people who consider Westlake their home should be paying more for trash than someone who lives on the north side of John Daly Boulevard. This matter came before the city council three years ago. Came before the city council in connection with water rates. At that time, Westlake was being charged the commercial water rates. Westlake objected and said, "This isn't right. We should be being charged the residential rates." Three years ago, the city council recognized the mistake, corrected the mistake, and thereafter, Westlake was charged, and its residents were charged the residential water rates. We think the same thing should be done here. Thank you, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. I appreciate you giving me the chance to explain my clients and my position. Thank you very much for your courtesies and cooperation.
Thank you, Mr. Birch. Thank you for making your presentation. We very much appreciate it. Ms. Zimmerman, did you have any follow-up?
This is just a follow-up based on the evidence that's already been provided to the city council. Just to be perfectly clear, I know that there's been a lot of argument made about a 55% increase. That is not the case in this situation. Just to correct the record, in 2016, when the new franchise agreement took into effect, they inherited the old rates. There was no rate adjustment. So if you're going on the assumption that you have a contended discounted rate because you should be charged for single-family residents, the services have maintained the same. They should be charged the commercial multifamily rates. As you will see here, we do have a summary that was created. Now, this is the summary, so yes, so these are documents that are presented for purposes of presentation of this council. You'll see that in 2016, there are 107 accounts. Now, of course, that's disputed, but this is what is provided to us as Republic Services is being our provider, utility billing, just bills what they tell us is the service out there. It's 310 containers bins on the site. It hasn't changed a whole lot in terms of services, but you do see a variance if the rates, in 2016, the rates did not change a whole lot because they were already approved. We did not increase rates until 2017. So it's not a 55% increase on rates. It was an underbilling of what the current rate should be for the services that were provided in 2016. So it should maintain its consistency, as you see in the record that was provided to you. The other thing is when, when we go through the arguments, and I just wanted to just clarify, we go into May 2018, and now we had conceded to the council that there were definitely billing errors, and we definitely acknowledge that. When Republic Services took over and they were working with our finance department, we did have to relook at the accounts for Westlake because they did get a discounted rate, for whatever reason, we are unsure. So when this was first brought over to the city attorney's office, unfortunately, it was brought up to the prior city manager, and there was discussions that there was a discount since 2003. Unfortunately, there is no documentation to support that, that otherwise council would have brought that forward to this, to this council, as we state. So I do want to point out, we are moving forward with the new franchise agreement, the rates that were approved by the city council, the services that were provided. We did not go out and count bins in 2016 and 2017, but we do verify the bins currently, just like Westlake has verified their bin count. Now, in our discussions, we talked about a joint effort to go out and count bin counts, but that did not happen, for whatever reason. We did not have opportunity to do that, but we did do it on our own, and we did confirm it. And the service levels has maintained the same. There hasn't been a whole lot of changes in regards of what the service levels are. I think that there is at least an agreement that the rates as presented should be the rates that are approved by the city council. The franchise agreement defines multifamily, for multifamily rates, as a parcel of buildings containing four or more individual residential dwellings. That rate is provided to the council in a rate sheet that is also part of the document and the record, that that rate is different than single-family rates. They are not a single-family residential unit. They are a 3,200 multifamily commercial account. So I do want to point those out. We did not, it operates on a faulty assumption that we did a rate adjustment. Basically, the letters that were sent were to correct erroneous billing and omissions. And moving forward, these are the bills that were provided, the invoices were sent to Westlake Village. Rather than dispute each invoice, basically what happened is they paid what they felt they needed to pay, and that's why we're here with the delinquent amount today. We will continue to dispute the bin count. I believe that what we are requesting the city council today is that the council approve the maximum delinquency and a special lien. In the event that Westlake Village and Republic Services were to go out there and they did see less bins out there for the rate that need, that was approved, we, the city attorney can direct to adjust the special lien lesser than the maximum amount. And basically, I basically just want to close out that we receive the invoices, we receive the services as Republic, as our service provider for garbage rates, and we invoice. We do not go out there and count bins, but we did it for purposes of this hearing, just to show to the council that we have some consistency here.
Okay. Let me ask my colleagues, do you have any questions, comments? Mr. Vice Mayor, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam City Attorney and Attorney of Record for Westlake. I'm going to be frank and just put out my thoughts based upon what I've heard tonight. The first issue I have is the route audit of January 2017, to which it doesn't exist, as we were told tonight. And that concerns me because I would think anybody doing business, and especially in the sense of Republic Services, we should have that. Time and time again during the presentation, I've thanked you, Madam City Attorney, regarding us going out and counting the bins. I think Republic and Westlake needs to come together and count those bins, because that seems to be a bone of contention here. And why this has not happened, it's beyond me, especially when there is a section stating that this should be done three, at least three times a year. But why are we here today? Also, I'm tiling that as field reconciliation. And then, errors, okay, errors in the bin count, already got that. No evidence to support underbilling 2016 and before. Well, my honest feeling is that perhaps Westlake was getting a discount, and now when it comes under a new franchise agreement, you know, the discount is over. So to hear records of phone correspondence, I guess those notes were made just to CYA and make a note so that you don't forget. I, for one, do not like hearsay information, especially when it refers to our city manager. Well, she said it was before her time. I, I'm completely disgusted to hear something like that because that's hearsay to me. In 2017, I was the mayor, and I did not even have a clue that something was like this was going on. So whose responsibility is that? Was it the city manager? Well, I'll tell you what, our city manager know how important this was, and that's probably why we're here today. And lastly, if we, if we were going to accept, as the attorney of record made mention, that Westlake is going to, they have the assumptions as per item number 15 on the chart, then why is there still a negative of $368,661? Something's not right here. So I just believe that both, both parties need to talk to each other. We all have vacations, we all have things to do, and things keep getting put off and put off. It's time to stop kicking the can down the road and do something about this now. So I would recommend that we take your recommendation, Madam City Attorney, and perhaps this might light the fire to get something done between the two. That's all I have. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Hi, Mr. Melo. I know that we have also, Representatives of Republic, did you guys want to say anything? Mr. Melo.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members, Mike Melo, General Manager of Republic Services. We've been at this an awful long time, I think now, going on several years. I take great exception to a couple of items, but in particular, the fact is, is that I have asked Mr. Chautka on several occasions, when Pat Martel was here, when we were in joint meetings, when this first came up, I go, "I will go out with you anytime." I even said, "The next morning, I will go out with you to confirm bid counts." And we never got anywhere with Westlake Village on that. So that's the one thing that I take great exception to. I think Mr. Birch has done a nice job of throwing a lot of items, you know, on the wall, but I think when you really come down to this, the rates have only changed here twice. We had the initial rates in 2016, which was approved by the council under the new franchise. The rates changed in October of 2017, when the council here voted on a two-year rate increase. That's the only time the rates have changed. There were two mistakes. Republic did make a mistake on the $122,000, which should have been $138,000. We're not objecting to that. We recognize that, that's certainly what happened. And I think the city and the billing department, they recognize that they were late in applying the October 2017 rate. We have gone out there, and I've personally walked every single one of those, you know, buildings. I know them by heart. I think when Mr. Stolti was out there, he confirmed, you know, with his own eyes, with his own pencil, with his own addresses, what is out there. And I don't know how else that we can do that. I'd be happy to go out with Mr. Chautka and these folks tomorrow morning, and, you know, we could go through there again. You know, I've made that offer many, many times. I think this whole theory is based on a false premise, this 55% rate increase. That never happened. What happened was there was, at some time, a deal made, you know, several years ago. That was before my time here. When I came here, I was told that through a data integrity audit that the company did, and basically, there's not a route audit. They're not going out. They're taking a look what's in our system, how many cans, how many bins that we bill, multiplying that by the service rates, two times a week, three times a week, you know, four times a week, whatever the case may be on different, different billings. So, you know, the long and short of it is, you know, we were perfectly willing to do that. The city confirmed on their own account what the service levels are. The rates have been approved by the city. The initial rate that was established in 2016, this whole talk of 24% rate increases, of 55% rate increases, that simply is not true. What is true is we have an established rate in 2016, we have the October 17 rate increase of 10.5%, the follow-up in July of 2018. That is coupled with the two mistakes. One was on our part on a billing error, and, you know, that was a serious error. We took account for it, and Mr. Mangini is no longer, he's no longer here, you know, with the company at that point. The city was late in applying the 2017 rate. But this whole idea is, to me, it's a farce to sit here and talk about 55% rate increases and 24% rate increases. We have the rate sheets, I've provided them to Mr. Birch for 2016, 2017, 2018, 2019, and it's plain math. You can see it right there. We've confirmed the rates and we've confirmed the service levels. I'm willing to do anything to try to resolve this. The city's been out, I think maybe Mr. Stolti can confirm for you that that's the exact amount that we had on the containers. We were off by very little, you know, very little amount. I'd be happy to ask any, you know, answer any question- I'd be happy to ask any, you know, answer any questions that you have, but to me, you know, we just went through an hour of, you know, an attempt to obfuscate this whole issue, when to me, it's not that complicated. Again, we have the initial rates, rate increase in 17, the rate increase in 18, and two billing mistakes. Westlake Village is underbilled initially, and then they have continued to blatantly underpay what their service levels are. They've made no attempt to increase that service level from 115. They started with that 115,000, and it's been, you know, two, you know, pretty close to two years and such, and they just refused to do that. You know, I know that, you know, the way they run Westlake Village, if somebody refused to pay their rate increase or their rent increase over there, they probably wouldn't be living there. We've been more than accommodating, we've been more than patient. I've offered to Mr. Chautka on many occasions to try to resolve this. Pat Martel spent a lot of time on this, five or six months here, to try and resolve this. She went back and even talked to most of my predecessors that had been here going back, you know, 10 years or so. There was no written, you know, agreement back then. So what we have now, I think, is very clear, I think it's very straightforward. I think they've underpaid us, we have confirmed the service levels, and the city has also been underpaid on their franchise fees.
Thank you, Mr. Melo. Okay, I think we've given both sides an opportunity to be heard. Let me have a motion to close the public hearing on this item.
Motion to close.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Any further discussion, or do I have a motion? Go ahead.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, I should have waited to hear both sides. So, you know, I always like to see things in black and white, and I saw 55%, I saw 24%, I saw 10%. But after hearing you speak, sir, I'm, what I'm thinking is, that actual 55% is based upon the rates they should have been paying. So if you take the 79,000 or the 70,000 that they were paying, but according to the rates, just do the math, multiply number of bins times the service, it's going to equal X amount of dollars, which is actually 55% more. Got it? Thank you. That's all I have.
Anybody else? All right. Hearing no other questions or comments, is there a motion to adopt the resolution?
I'll make the motion that we adopt the resolution.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Can I get a roll call?
Ms. Manalo.
Aye.
Dr. Rod.
Aye.
Mr. Sylvester.
Aye.
Mr. Buena Ventura.
Aye.
All right, thank you very much, everybody. Let's go on to item number 17, which is appropriate funds and award construction contract for the Daly City Signal Management System. Mr. Chan.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council Members. Tonight, staff would like to recommend that the city council accept all bids and award a construction contract for the base bid to W. Bradley Electric in an amount of $1,405,777 for the Daly City Traffic Signal Management System project, and authorize the city manager to execute the contract on behalf of the city. Staff further recommends that the city council approve the design documents, affirm the SEQA determination of categorical exemption, and appropriate an additional $1,77,710 of AB 1600 developer impact fees to fully fund the project. The city currently operates 40 traffic signals, 39 of which are obsolete, and equipment is no longer supported by the manufacturer. Only a handful of the traffic signals currently communicate to our courtyard. So with this project, we would like to standardize on one type of traffic signal controller and one type of traffic signal cabinets, so that it would be easier to maintain and also to be able to install a communication system, so that we are able to centrally communicate from either City Hall or the courtyard to each of the traffic signals in the field. In May of 2017, city council awarded a design contract to ITRIS to help the city assess our current traffic signal system and develop a concept plan to implement the needs of the city. They worked with city staff to identify the criteria of a new traffic signal management system and issued, helped the city issue an RFP, Request for Proposal, for various traffic signal systems that are available on the market. In January 2019, city council awarded the first phase of this contract to Control Tech West, or CT West, to install a new traffic signal management system and to furnish new traffic signal controllers. In May of 2019, city staff advertised the bid package for the installation of the communication system and upgrading the equipment at the traffic signals. The contract, construction bid documents included a base bid and a bit, one add alternate to allow flexibility in the award of the contract based on available funding. The base bid for the project included the replacement of the old traffic signal controller cabinets, the installation of communications hardware, and battery backup systems at the traffic signal locations, and configuration of communication system. Add alternate one included the replacement of signs to control traffic on Geneva Avenue in front of the Cal Palace. On May 29, 2019, the city received four bids totaling, ranging between a low of $1,604,777 to a high of $2.5 million. The lowest of three bids are summarized in the table. In our bid documents, we say that we award the base, award the contract based on the combined total of the base bid and the add alternate one, which is the total bid amount. And in this case, W. Bradley, total of $1.6 million, $604,777, was determined the lowest responsive bidder. Staff is recommending that only the base bid be awarded and the add alternate not be awarded at this time. In discussions with the police department, the signs that control, that are in front of the Cal Palace to control events, aren't used very often, and so with the limited use and the high cost of the new signs, we feel that it's not in the city's best interest to award it at this time. But in the future, if there are additional events where we would use the signs more frequently, the design plans are in place, and we would be able to go out to bid to award that part of the contract at a later date. There was an error made by one of the bid, the control, the proposal proposers. Mike Brown Electric was initially the apparent low bidder, but after staff evaluated their proposal, we found an error in their bid schedule, which showed a discrepancy between the unit price of one of the base bids and the total cost of that base bid. And when there's a discrepancy between the base bid and the cost of that bid item, the unit price governs. And so when we reevaluated and calculated the cost of their total bid, they came out to be the third lowest bidder and not the lowest bidder. So W. Bradley has been in construction, in business since 1979. They hold the required Class A and Class C 10 contractors license. They've done similar work for other cities, for the city of Fremont and Dublin, as well as completing two projects for Daly City back in 2007 and 2008. If the project is awarded as recommended, construction is anticipated to start in October of 2009, 19, and be completed in March of 2020. The total estimated cost of this project is $2,42,710, which includes the design contract to ITRIS for $144,090. The contract to CT West for $254,680, and the $1.4 million construction contract to W. Bradley with a 10% contingency and 7% construction inspection. An additional $1,077,710 is needed above the $965,000 that was previously appropriated for this project. And this additional funds would be coming from the AB 1600 developer fees. So in conclusion, staff recommends that the city council accept the bid and award just the base bid to W. Bradley in the amount of $1.405,777, and appropriate an additional $1,077,710 to fully fund the project. Staff, available for any questions?
Thank you, Ms. Chan. Any questions?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have two. AB 1600 developer funds, perhaps the city manager can answer this, or maybe you can. Is that the money we take, we get from developers to, is it impact fees we get from developers?
Correct.
And since this is traffic-related, any, any way that we can get SB 1 funds?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. Currently, the AB 1600 funds developer impact fees are sufficient funds in there to fund this project. One of the ways to improve traffic flow is to upgrade the traffic management system. We don't have much ability to increase lanes, things like that. In terms of SB 1 funding, we have plenty of road repair, maintenance-type of projects to utilize all of the SB 1 money that we utilize right now. So we are recommending using the AB 1600 funds for this project.
Thank you. I did get your notice on the slurry street repairs. I had, I have one more question. Does the traffic management system utilize infrastructure for the same file parking meters? In other words, carry the signal?
It does not at this time, in terms of, it's basically communication for the signal system itself and coordinating that. In terms of the traffic meters, there's going to be a lot more discussion as a result of the Parking Studies Summit that we just had today, and so there's going to be much more discussion in regards to parking meter program and whether it gets expanded or changed.
Well, yeah, that's, and that's specifically why I asked the question, because as we move and if we're going to upgrade our parking meters, why dig up the ground twice if we can use the same infrastructure as to where the wires run for traffic signals, not unless it's wireless? But that's why I just brought that up.
Yeah, typically, most of the parking meters that we've looked into, in terms of the more modern ones with credit cards or the pay stations, most of those are using wireless-type of.
Thank you. That's all I have. Thank you.
Any other questions? No? Can I, having no more than questions, can I get a motion to adopt the resolution?
Motion to adopt.
Second.
All right, first and a second, and roll call, please.
Ms. DiGiovanni.
Aye.
Ms. Manalo.
Aye.
Dr. Rod.
Aye.
Mr. Sylvester.
Aye.
Mr. Buena Ventura.
Aye.
Thank you. Ms. Chan. Number 18 under ordinance is the second reading of ordinance 1429 amendment, amendment to zoning ordinance regarding 3001 Geneva Avenue. Ms. Zimmerman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. This item came before the council as an introduction of the ordinance at the last regularly scheduled meeting. This is up for adoption, ordinance number 1429.
All right, any questions or comments? Hearing none, can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Ms. DiGiovanni.
Aye.
Ms. Manalo.
Aye.
Dr. Rod.
Aye.
Mr. Sylvester.
Aye.
Mr. Buena Ventura.
Aye.
Thank you, Ms. Zimmerman. Under Public Appearances or Communications, I have no speaker cards. Then now we go to appointments, any board commission appointments? Hearing none, let me go to number 19 under reports, council committee reports, meetings May 28 through June 23. Any?
I want to go first. Go ahead, we'll go this way.
Go ahead, Ms. DiGiovanni.
Well, the first meeting that I went to was the SFO roundtable, and we're making great strides on the local landing, and we have problems with that, but they seem to be that Jackie Spears' office has been so, given them so much pressure, that they are still making strides on it, so the traffic patterns. So we're trying to still create a subcommittee for, for that particular part. We had a lot of residents that came from Daly City, and in particular, in the Bay Shore area and Summit Ridge. And then I had met with the gentlemen offline, and now they seem to have dissipated some of the complaints over in that particular area, which is great, over in Summit Ridge. And so they're thankful for that. I can attend to the commute.org, and under the commute.org, they're looking into the increase, they've already had increases in all the shuttles, which is great to hear that people, and percentage-wise, has grown to use mass transit. And our, and Samtrans is a partner in that, in our North County Transit. So it's slow movements, but they've had a better increase, and Teamsters has been a big part of it, as far as drivers, and the pay is now $26 an hour, so that that really helped a lot in getting qualified drivers, and things have leveled out on, on any of that issue. And then Dr. Rod and I had a meeting with the city manager and the, Mr. Kern and staff. It was in regards to the contract that we currently have between the city and the school districts concerning the use of facilities. And moving forward, we will be meeting with the superintendent, and the city manager has sent a email out, and we will be asking for that, and seeing what we can rectify and making sure that we had received invoices from them. And a part of our contract was that all of a sudden now we got these fees, and we paid the fees, but we need to come to a meeting of minds. It's an older contract, I believe it was in 2003, so it needed an update anyway, so because the main focus is the children in our community, they're all our children. So we're hoping that we can work something out on that particular end, and that'll be scheduled, and I'm on the subcommittee with Dr. Rod, and if he would like to add anything.
I think you hit all the points, Pam.
Well, thank you, Dr. Rod.
Anything else? No? Okay, Ms. Manalo.
Mr. Mayor, on May 29, there was a Bay Shore Revitalization Cal Palace Committee with Vice Mayor. What we talked about particularly was the parcel of land that is, used to be redevelopment, and it was about how we can move forward, we need to develop that land. And so that particular parcel is for housing, and we went out to get a request from some architects to see what is feasible on the site. They gave us three renditions of what is possible on that site, as far as, you know, is it just all townhomes? Is it a mix of, you know, residential towers and towns, townhomes, et cetera? But that's what we received from that meeting, but it was good for us to see what the possibility was. I think the question is looking into also, you know, what type of housing. We know we need housing, there's a crisis right now in the Bay Area, and so it's looking at that as an opportunity to build more housing and looking at the levels of affordability, as well as what kind of program could be committed to at that site.
Great.
Vice Mayor, anything I missed?
Anything else? No? Okay. Dr. Rod?
I attended the June 13 CAC meeting. One of the main highlights was the election of the sea level rise.
Oh, yeah.
All the...
Board.
Board. And there were, so there were five candidates that was elected. It was Mary Ann Mois Durwin, Town of Potola Valley, and representing the north is Donna Colson of Burning Game. uh, Donna Colson of Burning Game. Uh, central section was by Diane Pappin from San Mateo. From the south is, uh, Lisa Guthur of City of East Palo Alto. And then the coastal region that represented is, um, Deborah Ruddock of City of Half Moon Bay.
Great.
All women?
Yeah.
Wow.
Anything else?
Um, no.
Okay.
I was like, we went to that one meeting, I'm a panelist. The one we talked about, the, the district.
Okay. Mr. Vice Mayor?
I have nothing, Mr. Mayor. I spoke enough tonight.
Okay.
Thank you.
Item number 20, city council meetings. Any city council reports? No? Okay. Item 21, staff.
Oh, I do.
Oh, go ahead. I'm sorry.
I'll be really fast.
No, go ahead.
So on June 3rd, um, Mr. Mayor led, um, the Philippine flag raising that happened here, um, and it's its fifth year, sir? Yeah, fifth year. So, um, that was here at City Hall. Thank you for everyone that joined and participated. Um, also on June 5th, was able to go to the TRP Policita Scholarship Ceremony. Um, June 6th, the Bay Shore, uh, School Eighth Grade Promotion happened. Um, on June 7th, uh, the Ben Franklin Eighth Grade Promotion also happened that week. On June 8th, the Pacific Islanders Day at San Mateo occurred, which was a beautiful hot day, um, and celebrating with family and music, um, with, uh, um, everyone here on the council. Um, also on June 15th, the Fileo Scholarship, um, in which, uh, Vice Mayor helped start that organization, and the first time, uh, Ethan wore a barong matching to Vice Mayor. Um, on June 19th, the Kalayaan Gala with, uh, the Council General occurred. Um, and, uh, lastly, on June 23rd, um, a beautiful, um, display of the Philippine Ballet Company, um, called Kalayaan on point yesterday. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Any others? Go ahead.
I just wanted to add that everyone that she said, except, and then add on to the county one, with the flag raising with Supervisor David Canepa for celebrating the Independence Day as well, and also the, all the graduations that we attended. And, um, do we do, there was a whole lot, wasn't there? Any more? Besides that?
I said where I went. I don't know.
I was there. And then the, for the Fileo as well, and thank the chief as well, and that was a great event, and thank the vice mayor for, uh, welcoming us into his world. Uh, he made sure that we got the VIP treatment, uh, over in a special table with our officers and our chief. So it was very humbling to be sitting there and one of our own receiving a scholar, a Fileo scholarship was pretty moving, that was with his mother. So it, it, we have a bright future here, and our cadets are amazing, and our officers and captains. So, thank you very much. I really appreciate it, chief.
Okay. Any others?
I have something.
Go ahead.
I'll make this quick. Um, thank you, uh, Councilmember DiGiovanni and, uh, Councilmember Manalo for acknowledging Fileo. Uh, apparently, uh, the chief was there for a reason, and you kind of alluded to it. It's one of our own Daly City explorers who got the scholarship, and that's why the chief came out and, uh, his staff to show support. Thank you, uh, Councilmember Manalo for the compliment on the barong. It's, uh, I got a few grandkids and a lot of them cry when they see me, but your, your baby doesn't cry. And I really appreciate that. Uh, thank you to the mayor, Ray Buena Ventura, who attended the San Mateo, uh, County Philippine Flag Raising. You really gave an excellent speech, and it amazes me, something that Supervisor Canepa started here in Daly City four to five years ago, now seems to be spreading throughout, uh, California. Uh, Union City was raising their flag, San Francisco does it, so, uh, the cultural diversity is very, very important, and, uh, we need folks to step up, and we'll do it for anyone because, uh, this is what Daly City is all about. And Pacific Islanders together, it was a hot day, but I didn't miss out on the barbecue and those, uh, turkey legs, which was very, very expensive. That's all I have. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Thank you. I also want to mention that Fileo event. I actually saw some of the live streaming on it, and I was, I was particularly impressed with the young man who's, who, who got the scholarship or the grant, cause he, I remember him saying it, it was his dream to become a Daly City police officer.
Yes.
And I just thought, wow, we've got really good people who dream of being our cops. I thought that was...
Thank you.
And he was, he was such a good kid. I mean, you could just tell by what he was saying, he was sincere and he really, really wants it. So I hope, I hope that, that happens for us. Um, okay, so we have, uh, several adjourned memories, uh, tonight, so let me turn it over to, uh, the vice mayor for the, his list.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, uh, Willis Gariot and Bruce Frank Merovich are two police officers that I've had the pleasure to work with in my career. They passed away. Uh, you've probably heard the news about Officer Tara O'Sullivan out of Sacramento PD, responded to a domestic violence call, and she's a brand-new officer. I think she has not been on the field for even a year. And she, uh, gave the ultimate sacrifice. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Manalo?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Elizabeth E. Bardolosa Ingtagnlok, Ingtagnlok, from, uh, she passed away on May 20th, 2019. Um, but she's a longtime resident here in Daly City. Um, Elizabeth have, has five, um, grandchildren. She is blessed with three children. The eldest is Domingo Eric Ingtagnlok, their second child, Laarney Ingtagnlok Semanau, and Joel Ingtagnlok, being the youngest. Um, she was, uh, very active in religious services in her parish church, Our Lady of Perpetual Help here in Daly City, a member of the Legion of Mary Choir, a Eucharistic minister, and she's known to people that she's helped, um, around her generosity, uh, providing lunches for schoolchildren, donating supplies to kids in her hometown, and, um, really, uh, been such a giving person. Um, and so, um, thank you for that time, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Manalo. We'd also like to adjourn in memory of Peter Carr, who is Jennifer Scantorelli's, uh, father. She works for Daly City Police Department as a crime analyst. Also, I'd like to adjourn in memory of Joanne Prozek, who is the, uh, grandmother of Christopher Broadway, who works for us at Water, Waste Water as an operator. And finally, we'd like to adjourn in memory of Z. Ken Tan, who is the grandfather of Philip Track, who is a building maintenance worker in Daly City. With those in mind, we'd like to adjourn in their memory. Thank you very much, everybody. Meeting's adjourned.